Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good to see you all here. Today is a public hearing pursuant to Board of Education bylaws that in sum and substance require that if the Board of Education considers or contemplates changing the name of a school, we have certain rules and protocols. If a school, it is proposed that a school's name be changed, the first thing that has to be done is you have to collect signatures from people in the community. Thanks to Dr. Anderson and probably many others, 300 signatures were obtained; only 100 were required per board policy. The next thing the board bylaws require is that you have a public hearing to discuss the potential name change, and that's why we're here today. I am joined by Commissioner Funchess, I'm sorry, Commissioner LeBron. It's been a long day. I was talking to Commissioner Funchess right before I got here. Commissioner LeBron and Vice President Powell. We'll take your testimony, your thoughts, your ideas, your comments, your concerns. If you have an idea for the school's name, we'll take that as well. After we present the testimony or your comments, we'll present that to our colleagues who could not be here, and at some future meeting, perhaps this month, perhaps the next month, we will, the board will consider as a body whether we should rename the school. I think I've spoken way too much because the floor is yours. I'll say one other thing. When we have these public hearings, the purpose of the public hearing is not to hear what the board's thoughts are. So you may say, "Well, why isn't Van or why isn't Willa or why isn't Beatrice responding?" We're here to listen. If you have a criticism or a compliment, we're not going to respond to it. That's not our function here today. We're just here to listen. So with that having been said, we'll have our first speaker, who would be Dr. David Anderson. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. White. Thank you, ladies. In moving to Rochester a good number of years ago, there was little bit being, little being said about Frederick Douglass. In fact, I didn't know that he had resided here for so long until after I had done undergraduate studies here and also graduate studies at Syracuse and came back to work for Action for a Better Community. Since then, I've been growing in appreciating what he represented, what he actually accomplished, and wanting then to have more of an activity sponsored by the city that would not only satisfy me but give comfort to those people who would visit Rochester. Annually, for the last 13, maybe 14 years, teachers and administrators from schools in San Bernardino, California are on a footsteps of freedom, as they call it, which is basically a study, a field study on Underground Railroad. And they fly into Ohio and then by charter bus, they roam over Ohio, Michigan, part of Ontario, Canada, returning to the United States in Niagara Falls, quick dash over to Mr. Seward's territory in Auburn, also Harriet Tubman. And then the last stop is always here. And on that bus, the first few years would be about 35 people, mostly teachers of all kinds of backgrounds, and then a few administrators. Once in a while, a superintendent of schools would be onboard. And then two years ago, they upped to 55. And then last year, they used two different Saturdays and had two buses each with 55 teachers, not the same ones every year. They've been doing this steadily, certainly. And this year, they're talking about four buses, and I have spoken to people in the school district about maybe at least come out and say hello. But at any rate, there is an interest, and we have, seems to me, a responsibility to feed that interest and also see how it can make it more accessible, the story, what the family stood for, how we can make that more accessible to our children and the families that send them to our schools. We have, we have a, yesterday, some of us were out at Mount Hope Cemetery in our annual effort to give tribute to the United States Color Troops, which was a designation given to those men of color who, after a while, in desperation, President Lincoln would issue an Emancipation Proclamation, with a provision that men of color would be admitted to the Union Army, because before that time, they were regarded as not able. And when they did change that with January of 1863, Frederick Douglass sent 34 people from here to Massachusetts to be a part of that groundbreaking process which the 54th Massachusetts Infantry Regiment came out of. It was something that, that a state did as opposed to the federal government. And two of Douglass's sons were involved in that. The eldest, Louis Henry Douglass, was the sergeant major, the ranking non-commission officer. And thank God, he did survive the Battle of Fort Wagner and others, and came back to help build things here. We also would have people who had not known about Rochester, soldiers deciding to settle here. And that's what we do when we go to the cemeteries every May. And there, we've identified 15 burials, which are of men who were in the United States Color Troops. Not one of them enlisted from here. Why did they settle here? And who did they connect with? We have several of them that were involved with what we now know as Memorial African Methodist Episcopal Zion Church. We have several of them that became members, charter members of the Eureka Lodge of Prince Hall Masons, which was the organization that corresponded with Mr. Douglass after he and family had moved to DC. We have been around Mr. Douglass. We have looked here and there, and there's no kind of public acclaim, no physical evidence that men of color were in the Union Army. And yet, we know that it was this decision to put arms in their hands and bring them into the Union Army that provided the margin by which the Union would win and therefore contribute to the saving of the nation. And you see the arguments back and forth, and coming out on top of the argument in terms of getting those men involved took place while the Douglasses are living here. The Douglasses had a, their youngest child, Annie, she was born here a year after they settled in Rochester. She's the only one born here. And nine days before her 11th birthday, she died. It would appear that there was a trauma likely conditioned by the fact that John Brown, the man, the rabble, the rebellious, that's not a term I want, but the way out front abolitionists, had come to visit the Douglasses because he had an idea and he wanted to talk it over with Big D. And, but Big D, as it say, Frederick Douglass, was busy. He had a newspaper to run, and he had speeches to make, and he had to go here, there, and yonder. And so the little girl, Annie, was the one that John Brown spent the majority of his time with. They played games, they sang songs, and he showed her his drawing instruments, protractor, compass, stuff that you would use if you were making maps. And after a while, after a month, he went away. He did contact Douglass a few months later and laid his plan for seizing the arsenal at Harpers Ferry, Virginia, federal affiliation, federal agency where you could get guns and ammunition. And his idea was to take those guns and that ammunition, put it in the hands of enslaved people that could get to them, and therefore, he figured what to end slavery. Well, Douglass told Brown it was not a good idea, and he should abandon it. They argued all night in a rock quarry in Pennsylvania. And when dawn came, Douglass said, "I'm going back to Rochester to do what I know how to do best, which is to agitate, agitate, agitate." And he did. Well, Brown did what he said he was going to do, except that before he could distribute the ammunition, a contingent of soldiers and Marines under the command of Colonel Robert E. Lee, soon to become General Robert E. Lee of the Confederate Army. But the Colonel, leading United States Army troops, recaptured the arsenal. Brown was hung. Well, before he was hung, there was a warrant out for Douglass's arrest, and his friends advised him, "Boogie, get away, because there would not be a fair hearing." And he, as he had done so often, sent himself to Canada and thereafter to England, friends in England. Later, in March, well, in late December, he got his letter from his daughter, Annie, the little one that spent time with John Brown. "Dear Father, I'm doing well in school, and the children like me." It probably was what we eventually knew as School 13 on Hickory Street. "The children, I'm learning to speak German, and Dad..." And then she abruptly said, "Father, Mr. Brown is dead. Those mean men took him out to a field, and they hung him." By the time he got the letter, she was on her way out. And March 11, 1860, she passed. So he, never mind the order for his arrest, he came back. Luckily, the heat was off by then. So we have that, and in the meantime, we've got Anna, who had risked her own safety to help him get free in Maryland. She is the one who had the five children. And the first time when he's away in, in England, he may have set her, you know, a dime or two or a dollar here, there, and I don't know, or some coupons or whatever you want to call it. But after a while, when he got through it in England, came back, they're eating at the dinner table, and I think it's Rosetta that goes to the door and pulls out the bank book, and every penny he had set, it had been put in the bank. Because she, Anna, was able to make income from attaching the soles of shoes to the uppers. She supported the family. When he's out on the road and people came through, freedom seekers, they deal with Annie, they dealt with Anna. And all, and you know, obviously, I could go on and on. I like to talk. You know that, don't you? But the deal is, we have an opportunity to strengthen this city and county in terms of the visitation. This should be a national park, but I'm not advocating that so much as I'm saying there's an untouched opportunity, and we need to take it. Mostly, we need to emphasize the family that was here for 20-some years and see if we can identify what the virtues and values that were practiced by that family. I suspect we can do that, and I suspect our children, who still, the little ones especially, like to play, you understand what I mean? They just might show us how to get to that. And now that Mayor Warren has named both the library and the recreation center Frederick Douglass Community Center, hey, you know, can we go against that? How, how, how well would that go down? We have an opportunity to claim our legacy. There are now five or six statues of Frederick Douglass in various parts of the country. Initially, the first one, the only one was here, the one that they're going to move up close to the South Avenue, the first in the nation dedicated to a person of color, black man. And, you know, it's, it's obvious, we got to do what is laid on us by the Almighty, I believe. And you don't go messing with the Almighty. Come on now. We got to do this because it will benefit us as well as inform the nation that, hey, them people in Rochester, them school people in Rochester, they're, they got the kids dealing with virtues and values that go way back, and it's all right if we would do that. If we would do that. If we would just say, maybe not just Frederick Douglass, but maybe it's Frederick and Anna Douglass, or Anna and Frederick Douglass. Because whichever way you go, you know, it takes two to tango, it takes two to start a family. And those are the two I want. Beautiful sister, Annie, Anna Murray Douglass, tall, strong-willed, sometimes off, off the course, Frederick Augustus Washington Bailey, who, he missed his family, his family upbringing because Harriet was on the plantation over there picking cotton and rice and a whole bunch of stuff. And every once in a while, she'd slip away and go see her baby who was in his grandmother's cabin. Grandma too old, they say, to go out there and chop, chop rice and stuff like that, but she, she kept the babies, that her daughters and others had. And Douglass remembered, "I never saw my mother over three, four times, but I remember that she used to sing me to sleep. She would come in the night, traveling the 12 miles, and she would lie down with me and sing me to sleep. And after I was sound asleep, she would steal away, for she was not back at the plantation in time to be in the field at sunrise. She would be lashed on her back in a buzzing." That is all that I remember about her, except that she called me her little Valentine. Slaves were not allowed very much information about themselves lest they begin to think of themselves as people, but he took that little bit, and he took bits of information he had gotten incidentally. He figured it must have been in the winter when I was born. And on and on he figured, and figured, and finally, it came to him, and he selected February 14, 1817. And later, he had it confirmed that 1818 was the year. "I will move away now, because you know I like to run on."
Before you go, say what name that we want. Anna, Anna Douglass, Anna and Frederick Douglass School Number 12.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Appreciate your wisdom. Sandra Brewer?
People are laughing because I shared with them how difficult it is to follow Dr. Anderson. My daughter went to 12 School, and he came and talked to them about the Quonset values. We've been at the cemetery for the presentation he talked about because my husband was with the 108 Civil War group. And so I just, he's a wonderful person, and I love him. And so I have a few thoughts of my own here that I want to share, but thank you because I always learn from you, Dr. Anderson, especially on Martin Luther King Day out in Brighton, when you're there with the storytellers, too. Is this appropriate size, or can I turn it? Can somebody help me? I'm getting shorter as age goes. Okay, thank you. Now, you have, like, two minutes?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're flexible, a little bit flexible.
Okay. I'm Sandra Brewer, 47 Laney Road, Rochester, New York, and I've lived at the same address for about 65 years. My concern here is about changing of the school's title from James P. Duffy to Frederick Douglass. And after reflecting on the news report about this possible name change, I have some concerns about it. I worked at the University of Rochester Library and Rare Books Manuscripts and Archives as a researcher and cataloguer. Our department had Frederick Douglass, Al Winger and Barry, Susan B. Anthony, and Louis Henry Morgan papers, to name a few of the many important items in the collections. When I volunteered at Duffy School when my daughter was a student here, I used to make copies of Douglass and Anthony items to display them in the school library for students' interest. The school was involved in agricultural studies, special education classes, major achievement in foreign languages with art support staff. Physical education ran non-competitive sports events at the end of the school year. The school presented plays also. I was active in monthly principal-staff parent meetings and in charge of volunteers. It was often easy to get volunteers from parents of special education students as they were grateful to the teachers. I was pleased with 12 School as James P. Duffy School received a special designation of School of Excellence as it represented people working together on behalf of children learning. Identity is important. Do you change a name because serious problems now exist in a school that was exposed to the tragic loss of Trevion Rowe? Or do you fix the problems such as accurate and timely attendance reporting, making sure students enter the building, contacting parents quickly, and helping students with learning problems, or adjusting to a K-8 program? Would a name change ensure success in these areas? The community rallied around Duffy School and the child who was in trouble as they thought of him as their own child who was missing and spent countless hours in the search. Whatever you decide, I hope that your efforts will be significantly increased to help the students, just as the James P. Duffy School worked on behalf of the students to earn it a School of Excellence Award. I regret that the Douglas Junior High does not exist anymore, but that the name lives on in the statues, Bridge, Black History Month, and understanding of his efforts via North Star and the Underground Railroad. I hope the school district values policy will help students to improve their performance and that staff will appreciate the struggles of the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Julio Fazente?
Thank you very much. If you'll pardon me for appearing here. Dentally challenged, but duty before pride. Never change horses in the middle of the stream. Absolutely seems civically suspect. I can certainly understand Van White's anxiousness to apply immediacy after the lack of response given to Trevion Rowe. That dereliction triggered an Easter egg hunt for an endangered student later to be found drowned. I am puzzled as to why any historian would lack such foresight and awareness as to adopt a monument stained with scandal and a story which in the future will be referred to as having occurred at Frederick Douglass School. James Duffy characterized the disgrace, and Frederick Douglass should not now be pinned as such a shameful commentary. Duffy should remain the dishonored, earned reference to the legacy. Do not consent to this resentment of tarnishing the image. Representing one of Rochester's and America's greatest heroes, do not allow Van White to fool and perpetrate a name repurposing which is no more than proposing discarded used toilet paper from past leadership to honor Frederick Douglass's name in perpetuity, which means the future. Acceptance would be no less than a Trojan horse or a poisoned apple. R C S D has long overlooked Frederick Douglass. Douglass students, residents, and Rochester's future deserve much better. The next newest school built in Rochester should bear Frederick Douglass's name. If those propositioning homage are sincere, changing from Duffy School to Douglass School would be like putting on a new suit while wearing another's dirty underwear. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. John Mueller? John Mueller? John, okay. Take your time, John. Go ahead. Give me one second, Doris. Yes, as Mr. Mueller gets ready to take the podium, we will allow folks to speak. There is a sign-up sheet. Board bylaws require that we record the names of the speakers, so you don't need to now. So, you don't need to now. Just when you take the podium, you can sign your name, and then. No, it's over there. Go ahead, Mr. Mueller.
Sure, thank you very much.
Sure.
Sorry, just give me a moment here. Where's this thing here? Okay. First off, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm from Washington, DC. I'm a local historian, local reporter in Washington. I wrote this book about Frederick Douglas in Washington, DC. Frederick Douglas in Washington, DC: The Line of Anacostia came out in 2012. So, I know a little bit about Frederick Douglas. And I've actually been in Rochester the past week, kind of getting down into the, trying to discover the lost history. And I sent you a letter this morning, which I'll just read. So, let me just premise this. I'm unaware of all the local dynamics of the young man who lost his life. I don't know anything about that, so that's not my place to speak on that. I'll just speak on the history. Throughout America today, efforts abound to uplift fallen history and correct misleading mythology. It has come to my attention, courtesy of Honorable Kenneth B. Morris Jr., who's the grandson of Frederick Douglas, was just at U of R yesterday. It has come to my attention via Ken Morris that there's an upcoming decision to rename the James P. B. Duffy School Number 12 at 99 South Avenue in Rochester's Highland Park neighborhood after Dr. Frederick Bailey Douglas accompanying the adjacent Frederick Douglas Community Library. I read in the Democrat Chronicle, you, sir, Mr. Honorable Van Henry White.
It's Van.
I'm sorry?
Van is fine.
Okay, I've read, sir, very happy to read this, that in the Democrat Chronicle, you are receptive to the bold and consequential honor of ennobling the Douglas family by naming the school in recognition of both Anna and Frederick Douglas. As author of Frederick Douglas in Washington, DC, The Line of Anacostia, and a co-founder of the W Street Douglassonians Community Action Agency in the old Anacostia neighborhood of Washington, DC, which embraces and guards the legacy of the Frederick Douglas National Historic Site, I offer my full and unconditional support of your effort to uplift this fallen history of Anna Douglas, a strident godmother of Rochester's Underground Railroad. Acknowledging and raising up Dr. Douglas is of vital import in the bicentennial. However, in lifting up Dr. Douglas, we must also elevate all those who made his public life possible. Anna Murray was a woman as determined and committed to the abolitionist cause as her husband, as well as equally complex. Mythology and most historians have not treated her with the equal respect she commanded in her own life as an agent and conductor of the Underground Railroad in 1830s Baltimore and throughout decades in your station city of Rochester, New York. It is not beyond historic possibility Anna Douglas assisted Harriet Tubman in concealing members of the Bailey Tribe in her Rochester home as they moved towards Canada. So possibly, like, right here. Yet told by historians, held within the oral tradition of the proud and private close-knit Bailey Tribe of the Tuckahoe Community of Maryland's eastern shore, a young Anna Murray was a childhood friend of Alexander Wayman, the seventh bishop of the African Methodist Episcopal Church, and Frederick Augustus Washington Bailey, her future husband. So, long story short, Frederick and Anna knew each other as children, or as adolescents, and it's a little older. But that really hasn't gotten to the historical record, but that's a whole other issue. In moving to rename School Number 12 for Dr. Frederick Douglas, we humbly suggest you memorialize and uplift the fallen history of Rochesterian Anna Douglas, a patronist saint, radical abolitionist, constant friend, loyal wife, nurturing mother to five children, and grandmother of 21 children. I'm sorry. I need something to drink. And unfortunately, only nine of those grandchildren lived to adulthood. We dare speculate Dr. Douglas would insist on Anna's name. I'm sorry. We dare speculate Dr. Douglas would insist on Anna's name, his wife of nearly a half-century, mother to their five children, join him in the adornment of a public school in their adopted city of Rochester. We understand living descendants think it would be fittingly honorific, proper, and historic. Some of those descendants were on the email that I sent to you earlier today. Thank you for your consideration in this important matter to not only uplift Rochester's lost history, but the lost history of Anna Murray Douglas and the American abolitionist movement. Very respectfully, John Mueller, author of Frederick Douglas in Washington, DC: The Line of Anacostia. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. While we normally require that people sign up in advance, it's to the community's advantage that, in this particular setting, that we hear from everybody who has something to offer. So, I know Ms. Jackson Radney, if you'd like to take the podium, just do me a favor and make sure that you sign the sign-up sheet so that we have a record. There's a pen up there as well.
So, thank you, Mr. White, Dolores Jackson Radney. I simply wanted to say that the name that we request is Anna and Frederick Douglas School Number 12. And that is because they lived here for over 20 years. This is where she was a real conductor on the Underground Railroad, as you have heard earlier. And we want her legacy tied with his because they were truly a partnership. And it should be acknowledged here, especially here on this hallowed ground where she worked for over 20 years. And I thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, interesting time. I'll just start. Good evening. My name is Eric Daniels, and I am both a former student in School Number 12 as well as the father of two former graduates. Unfortunately, my wife, Michelle Daniels, isn't here today. She asked me to share the following words with you as this is something of great significance to her. The grounds of School 12 are important to the Douglas family legacy. It was more than just a place where the family lived. It was a place of growth, refuge, mourning, triumph, and healing. As the second-largest Underground Railroad site, it was the last place freedom seekers saw before boarding a ferry to Canada. It was a place where John Brown hit as a fugitive and grew out that infamous beard. He later went on to head the siege at Harpers Ferry, which was the start of the Civil War. It was here that Anna, Douglas's wife, faced death threats from both neighbors and the law for suspicion of hiding slaves. She did this despite knowing that the Fugitive Slave Law of 1850 stated that housing a runaway slave would result in death for a woman of color. Yes, she kept cooking, sewing, growing food, soliciting funds, gathering firewood, washing linens, and securing accommodations for these new freedom seekers. Although Anna, Frederick, and the children shared in the responsibilities, the bulk of the work fell on Anna's shoulders. Frederick was often away supporting his causes and at times was a fugitive himself. It was at his home that Anna received a telegram saying that the law was going to apprehend her husband for his alleged involvement in Harpers Ferry. He fled to Europe and on his return found that his youngest daughter, Anna, died. Douglas spent many nights writing speeches here on this site, including one of his most popular, Men of Colors to Arms. This speech was used to recruit the first Black regiment in the North to fight in the Civil War. This regiment will always be memorialized in the Oscar-winning film Glory. It was on this site that Frederick Douglas fought the Board of Education to desegregate schools after his daughter Rosetta was ejected from a private school due to her color. He bought the house on this site to become neighbors with his daughter's biggest opponent on this matter, Horatio Gates Warner, yes, of Warner Castle right behind Highland Bowl. It was on this site that Frederick Douglas made certain that education was important to Rosetta. She went on to become the first African-American female teacher in Cape May, New Jersey. His legacy for education lives on with the students of School 12. They have placed in five different national Frederick Douglass speech competitions. Locally, they have partnered with Equaba, Writers in Books, the City of Rochester, Rochester Oratorial Society, George Eastman House, Memorial Art Gallery, St. John's Fisher College, Nazareth, and the University of Rochester. Nationally, they have partnered with the National Park Service, John Brown Historic Site, the Cincinnati Underground Railroad Freedom Center, and the Frederick Douglas Family Initiatives. I am beyond excited that the library and the recreation center are named after Douglas, but we need a cohesive campus to best keep the Douglas legacy alive. An educational institution is the best place to start research, learn, share, and educate others about this family that helped create change in Rochester, New York, the United States, and, yes, even the world. I firmly believe that the best time to rename the school is now. Let's give Rochester another reason to celebrate during the Frederick Douglas Bicentennial Year. Thank you.
Ms. Daniels, do you have a copy of that that we can share? Do you mind if we? No, 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 we don't do that.
I don't know what name he wants us to name. Just Frederick Douglas or Anna? Can we get clarity?
Whatever, Dr.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure, Ms. Daniels, you fill out that form. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I attended tonight to show my support, but I felt compelled to speak just about a little bit. I'm in support of the proposed name change to Anna and Frederick Douglas campus.
Will you identify yourself?
I'm sorry. Jackie Campbell. I am the director of Rock the Future, but I'm also a parent of former School 12 students. And I could say that, and my kids went here a long, long time ago. But the name of the school was James P.
Nothing.
Right. And I could tell you that up until this day, I don't know who he was, ever. And I was never inclined to ask. But a few years ago, I'm actually addressing you about the 150 Ancestors Project that the City of Rochester did. And several years ago, we endeavored to identify African-American ancestors in Rochester. And it wasn't until going through that process that I even knew about Anna Douglas. I'd never even heard about Anna Douglas. But having learned about who she was and what she did and what she contributed, I walked a little taller and stepped a little higher. And I know that part of what we need to do with our children is to make sure that they understand the legacy and the shoulders that they stand on. So, if it can do that for me as a some-year-old woman, I know that it can do it for our children. And so, I stand in full support of this name change. I appreciate it.
Ms. Whitfield, Commissioner LeBron asked a legitimate question that if anybody has a suggestion about a name, you don't have to. Please offer it in addition to your comments. You don't have to, but if you have an idea, that's one of the reasons why we're here.
I'll put forth, while you're writing.
That's, okay.
I'm going to, this is another Jacqueline. I am Jacqueline Sprague, and I'm going to speak to the, I want to speak in this direction. It's extremely important that we recognize the contributions of Frederick Douglas not only to Rochester, to the nation, to England, to Ireland, to Haiti. And so, we are looking at an international hero who was supported by many, many people within this community. People that helped the statue being built, individuals who arranged for his many speaking engagements that were around the country. And of course, they were not in the South, but around the country and around the world. I'm speaking here on behalf of my family, who also participated right here with the Frederick Douglas family. My Aunt Louise Sprague was one of the individuals that would take care of Frederick Douglas, sis children. I am Jacqueline Sprague, and my sister Catherine Sprague Dexter is here. Loretta Sprague married our great-great uncle Nathan Sprague, and we have a long-term history of contributions from the Spragues in this community. We feel very much that it is time for our community to unite, to recognize the diverse contributions in our society here in our city who helped with their sweat and backbone to build this nation. And we need your support in the change of the name of this school as a foundation, and I'm saying this especially to the women. We women have a very prominent role in the education of our children around equality, around acceptance, not tolerance, acceptance of the diverse talents within our society. And so, I am saying to the board, and I'm saying to the individuals that are here, the Sprague family provides the full support of this change. And to make it clear, this has been an effort that has been going on for years. It is not something that was just came up. It has been in motion for years, and it is time for us to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sprague.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carvin Eisen, and I'm speaking first on behalf of myself and the re-energizing Frederick Douglas Legacy Committee that has planned a number of activities and has already initiated a number of activities in Rochester this year. And we have more planned. But I wasn't going to be here tonight. In fact, I was in Buffalo, and I got an email or a text from Ken Morris Jr., and he told me that he just sent me a letter, and he asked if I would come and read the letter right now. So, I turned around, came back to read the letter. So, before I read the letter, I will just say that I personally, as a citizen of this community, completely endorse the name change to Frederick and Anna Douglas Institute, or whatever you want to call it. I totally and personally agree with that and endorse that before I read Ken's letter. So, the efforts of Dr. Anderson and the community long before we come to this bicentennial year should be recognized, and we hope that this will happen. Now, I will attempt to read Ken's letter, and we'll go from there. And then, I would also say that just yesterday, for those that don't know, the University of Rochester bestowed posthumously a degree of Doctorate of Law for Frederick Douglas. And Ken Morris Jr. was here to receive that. That was yesterday. And at the same time, my wife got a doctorate as well, so. All right, enough of that. All right, this is from Ken Morris Jr. My name is Ken Morris Jr. I am the great-great-great-grandson of Frederick Douglas and Anna Douglas and president of the Frederick Douglas Family Initiatives. I write to you on behalf of the Douglas family. It has come to our attention that a public meeting is scheduled this evening to discuss renaming James P. B. Duffy School in honor of the Douglas family. We humbly suggest that the school be renamed for Frederick and Anna Douglas. Anna Murray Douglas was introduced to the world on the pages of our great ancestor's first autobiography, The Narrative of the Life of Frederick Douglas as an American Slave, published in 1845. After escaping slavery in 1838 and landing in New York, Frederick had this to say about his desire to have Anna join him. Quote, "I write to her, I wrote to her immediately after my arrival in New York, notwithstanding my homeless and houseless and helpless condition, informing her of my successful flight and wishing her to come." Close quote. When Anna arrived, the Reverend J. W. C. Pennington joined them together in holy matrimony. Frederick wrote, quote, "I shouldered one part of our baggage, and Anna took up the other, and we set out forthwith. Anna would now share the burdens of life with me." Close quote. They had five children, 21 grandchildren, and were married for 44 years until her passing in 1882. Anna Murray was as committed to the cause of abolition, the abolition of slavery, as her husband. She was a conductor on the Underground Railroad and helped to ferry freedom seekers through their station and home, which stood on the site where the Duffy School is located today. It is safe to say that Anna spent more time than Frederick Douglas due to his ex- due to his extensive traveling schedule. It is virtually important, it is vitally important to continue to lift up the life and legacy of our great American hero Frederick Douglass. It is equally important to elevate the heroine who shared the burden of life with him and made his work possible. In Freedom, signed Kenneth B. Morris Jr., President, Frederick Douglass Family Initiatives." So with that, I offer this for the record and would make a copy of this letter available to you at the appropriate time.
Thank you very much, Carvin. I appreciate that. Mr. Underwood?
Good evening. My name is Jerome Underwood. I'm president and CEO of Action for a Better Community. And I'm also a member of Rochester's Black Agenda Group. I'm here this evening to offer my unequivocal support for the name change of this school to the Anna and Frederick Douglass School Number 12. In addition to what our elder Dr. Anderson has laid out with respect to the historical significance of changing the name of the school, I wanted to add the impact to the students yet to come and the parents, i.e. the families who would attend here. I referenced an article in the Democratic Chronicle just yesterday that talked about Victorious Minds Academy that we launched. And a major tenet of Victorious Minds Academy is the embrace of history and culture and the lived experiences of people of African heritage in our district, in our country, and the world. And embracing that culture and anchoring our education in that goes a long way to children loving to learn. I offer a quote from Cicero. Cicero, this is from about 54 B.C. "There is very little that is more important for any people to know than their history, culture, traditions, and language. For without such knowledge, one stands naked and defenseless before the world." In such a times like this, where the 200th anniversary of Dr. Douglass's birth, we have an opportunity to further elevate Rochester, the place that I now call home for the past 33 years, to international status. And thus, in doing so, I think strongly would attract more people to Rochester. It will interest our students to dig more into their history and culture. And by extension, the community gets better. So once again, I want to add my unequivocal endorsement of the name change to Anna and Frederick Douglass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Halif Abdul Wahid. I'm with the Black Agenda also. And I endorse the name change to Anna and Frederick Douglass Community School Number 12. I think the Douglas family, it should be made mention. The first 245 years in this country, that's close to 10 generations, black folks couldn't have a family. They were torn away from each other, sold chattel property. And even Frederick Douglass's story, he said that he seen his mother just a few times. He had a grandmother, and he himself was somewhat sold and stolen away. So I mean, that was the start of his life. But even with all of those challenges, the great story that our children should hear and they should know about is how he learned his ABCs and became one of the great orators of our time. Possibly one of the greatest, if not the greatest, American that this country has ever seen. But with that, the 25 years that he fought for true freedom, justice, and equality right here in Rochester was on this sacred ground right here. And I think that that has already been mentioned. He gave us a blueprint as black folk and people of how to stand up and have a family and have that whole family join you in the quest to produce true freedom, justice, and equality. Every member of the Douglas family, it has been recorded, that they sacrificed their lives, their reputation, that they toiled and got up every single day right out here on this campus, right here, to work on behalf of freedom for our people. And even after slavery, Frederick Douglass illustrious career along with his family, even when we thought that the great goal of slavery was the real big deal, he said in one of his greatest speeches that this society turned us loose right up under the sun, naked, for the weather to get right on us. There wasn't any help from the government, and there wasn't a lot of people that would help our folks or our people. They thought that if they would just let us go, you understand, it would be our punishment for wanting to even try to become free. And our punishment would be that we would just be tarried out, you know, right out into the openness. And he says, within 10 years' time, the population amongst African-Americans grew, based upon that we could have a family, based upon that we could take 200,000 to 300,000 of our people and start becoming students in the public education system. All of these things that have been said here tonight that is noteworthy of the Douglas family, the biggest thing that I see is that if we name this sacred place after the Frederick Douglass family, especially after the parents, it captures for us how we, as a family, need to fight for our education. We need to fight for truth, freedom, justice, and equality still today. And we need to continue along the same dignity that they strove for us to have. We have to continue along that same line. So I want to thank everyone that has come out tonight to support this change. It's very, very important, especially for our little children just like her. Because to know the true story of Frederick Douglass and his family, after most of us in this room had to be educated when we became adults, to learn this story right here, some of it is a shame, but I'm glad that we're still able to learn. So I thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kirsten Brown Warren. I'm a parent here at School Number 12. I'm a first grader here. I'm part of the school-based planning team. I am in this school at least twice a week, various times. Sometimes instructing, sometimes filing papers in meetings. My husband Gareth Warren is the president of the PTA here, so we're a very active family here at School 12. First of all, I also want to, I appreciate all the information I've been getting here about Frederick Douglass. I'm not a local Rochesterian. I've been here about four years, originally from the Washington, D.C. area. As a parent, I am proud of the fact that my child does attend school on such significant historic ground here in Rochester. We spend our, just about every afternoon, in the library, reading and playing with his friends and those in the community. I would first like to express my disappointment as a parent as to the lack of communication about this meeting that was disseminated to us. I think many of us would have liked to hear about this meeting directly from the district and not from Spectrum News or the Democratic Chronicle. Just want to put that out there. So if there's anything like this again, please, we would feel much more respected as the family, as the community within these walls, to know about something like this that's happening. I would also like to say for the record, I'm not opposed to the name change, but I do have questions about the timing of this meeting and what happens to the children inside this school. The children don't know who James P. B. Duffy is. Will children know more about who Frederick Douglass is if we change the name of the school? I'm not sure if that would be something. I also want to reference an article that Commissioner White, you were referenced in the Democratic Chronicle. You said that this is a year of transition for the school, and I think it could probably use an opportunity to talk about a different, more positive future, given what happened to Trayvon. You also said, "Not a new beginning, but a change." And I guess also paraphrased in this article, you said that a name change would also serve to help the school move on from the death of 14-year-old Trayvon Rowe. Given this information, again, this article was the first communication I got about this meeting. It was a bit alarming to me that, and I felt that this was ill-timed. And the reference to Trayvon Rowe and thinking that changing the name of the school will help our students and our families move on from the tragedy, I don't agree with that at all. Thank you. As you stated, you talked about the change. I think if you would like to initiate change at our School 12, I would suggest coming into the doors of our school and not putting letters on the outside. Also, sorry. Also, if you want a more positive and different future for our school, as you stated, Commissioner White, I would suggest that we, as a community, help our children realize who they are and whose shoulders they stand on. All these historians, community leaders, commissioners, volunteers in this room, our kids could use your passion. Our kids could use your knowledge. So as we talk here about all the things that I'm learning, I want to pass this information on to my child, who's a student here, and to all the children who are students here. Come and teach our children. Come and teach our families. Bundle up your passion tonight, bestow that upon our kids as you still consider renaming the school. That's fine with me. But I just want to say that if we change the name of our school, I'm a little bit of a feminist, Anna. I would also just beg the question, what happens to the children? So if we change the name, let's change the culture and let's come into the school and do the work and not just put some letters outside and say that we're going to learn about Frederick Douglass when that's not really going to happen. So let's think about that commitment as well. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other?
Mr. President, sometimes when other bodies have public hearings, they are able to ask questions of speakers who give testimony. Would you grant that opportunity? I'm thinking in particular to ask for Mr. Underwood because he worked for the district, if he might have a suggestion for a practical obstacle I'm facing. The fact that the Frederick Douglass campus has a 7th and 8th grade, a middle school, and School Number 12 is a K through 8 facility. How do we avoid confusion, particularly around the 7th and 8th grade?
But here's the thing. I would not have Mr. Underwood answer that question. It has to be somebody who's currently in the administration. I realize he may have some prior experience, but I...
I agree with that. And I will ask that question when we are back at Central Office. But I just thought perhaps because he did have a history as an administrator that he might just have a suggestion. Not, you know, this isn't a showstopper for me. It's just a suggestion of how to handle it mechanically.
Commissioner, can I just...
I just want to note, just so everybody knows, how this operates is, this isn't going to be the last discussion that we have on this. This will not be the final deliberation. Clearly, questions like this will be asked of administration, and there'll be a response. They too are here to listen today to what folks have to say. Certainly, there's nothing preventing anybody from asking questions, but I think you need to make sure that if you're asking a question like that, with all due respect to Mr. Underwood, who spent a lot of years in the administration, Central Office, extremely helpful. But I think we need to get that answer from someone in the administration.
Perhaps he and I can talk off the wall.
Yep. And then the other thing is, another thing that I would note before I get to you, Commissioner Funchess, is it is one of the most challenging aspects of this job to, and people have seen me say this many times before, because when you're on the school board, everybody wants to say something to you. And to not be able to respond is really challenging. But to that young lady who spoke, I will talk to you afterwards. And I think, because you do deserve an answer to some of those questions, I think what people will tell you is, I will tell you this, that Vicky Govea and Shirley Green will tell you that notices did go out to all parents. And it wasn't just the Democratic Chronicle in the news. I'm not sure what happened and why you didn't get notice, but emails, robocalls. What's that?
The timing.
Oh, okay. I thought you said you didn't get a response.
I didn't hear about it until this week. Well, I heard about it weeks ago from the...
The media attention about having this forum came up prior to any documentation or communication from the district to the parents of the students.
When did you get notice from this week? Is that right? Again, I'm explaining, I'm showing you by example why it's difficult to do the question-answer thing, but I appreciate what the parents are saying. So Shirley or Vicky, could you tell us when the official notice went out?
So we worked on the notice on a Friday evening for it to go home on Monday. The news article came out prior to us sending it home that Monday.
So when you say Monday, what date? How long ago was that? Sure, go ahead. Vicky, if you take the mic, please, so people can hear. Sorry.
We originally got the document from the board office. And because we have a very large population of bilingual students, I needed to send it back to be translated. And I didn't want to send out the English version ahead of the Spanish version. So I waited until I got the translation back. And it is very possible that they didn't go out on Monday, probably more like Tuesday or Wednesday. But again, it's how quickly we received it from the board. And then the only other delay was in the translation.
So when you say, you keep on saying days of the week, Monday, Wednesday, you're talking about of last week?
Last week.
Last week.
Yeah, because today's only Monday.
And is it correct to say that robocalls went out? I thought somebody said that.
Yep, we did two robocalls. One I did personally in my voice on Friday. And then a second one from our parent liaison went out, I believe, yesterday.
And I assume that that was done at the last minute to make sure parents got fresh information right before the day. Is that why you chose...
And I thought it was important that they heard my voice on the initial robocall.
I think there are kudos to the administration of school for providing communication about this forum. The question and concern is the district. The district needs to provide a better form of communication. There was an article that came out in school records on the 3rd of May. Obviously, there was dialogue prior to that article being presented, that there was a conversation about this taking place. And therefore, if you want to have a conversation regarding families, you need to include them. They should be at the forefront of any discussion, particularly those individuals that are housed here and their children who are educated within school. So again, my applause to the individuals within the schools who put the initiative, and it was a little bit delayed because of the circuit cameras. Our concern is the panel of front and the district in which you represent about your lack of communication of the onset of this discussion.
Can I, I just wanted to clarify something. So before I even, I'm brand new on the board, January. So prior to me even joining the board, I knew that this petition was happening. I'm very familiar with a lot of the folks that came up here and spoke. They actually do work in a lot of the schools throughout the district. I've worked with some personally, Jackie Campbell's husband at 44. So I just want to clarify that some of these folks are in our schools, are working directly with our kids, are teaching them history. I also want to clarify that this was discussed in the either January or February board meeting prior to Trayvon Rowe going missing. And the fact that Dr. Anderson had brought it up again. So he's been championing this for a long time. I've known him personally for a long, long time. And I'm very active in the South. And I'm very active in the Southwest and everybody knows Dr. Anderson in the Southwest. He's a legend. One day, we'll name a school after him, hopefully too. So I just want to clarify that because I'm sitting here and I'm listening and some of these folks I've worked with over the last 10, 15 years in this community, both as a parent, as a community member. My own children attended the district Frederick Douglass, which is northeast, northwest. And my youngest daughter is a student in the district still. So this is not a brand-new thing. It's very unfortunate because I know that when three new commissioners came on board, I think that Dr. Anderson saw it as an opportunity to revive this conversation that he's been trying to champion and push for, for a long time. And it's my belief, this is my only belief on this, that I think he saw this as an opportunity seeing that this is now a majority-minority board. And it's probably the first time in its history, I'm not that familiar if this is the first time where we've had a majority-minority. But being so, this is something that I think that this board would support. It's again, very unfortunate with the timing, but it was brought up again right in the January, February. It's on YouTube, just so you guys know, because we only, we discussed the policy, but also the process to rename a school. And so while I'm with you that families should be at the forefront, our policies don't say that it only extends to the families within a school community, that it extends outside to the community. And so they've gotten their, you know, in the beginning, Van White said 300 signatures, 100 are only required. But I feel like they've had those 300 signatures for a long time. So I just wanted to clarify some things on that. Go ahead, ma'am.
Wait, I would like to defer to that. You've been waiting for, I will address this, but I would like, because you've been standing there very patiently, waiting your turn. So go ahead and then I'll go after you.
I only have a couple of really quick things to say. Hi, unless I break things. Hi, I'm Angela Kraus and I teach here at School 12. It would be an honor, of course, to walk into a building that was named for Frederick Douglass. Absolutely. And to be able to celebrate and know and be in awe and reverence to and of, for the person who I was coming into the building every day, named after. My two concerns are really simple. One is, what does this mean for our peers that are already at the Douglas campus and how are they feeling? And as colleagues, I want to make sure that we're not doing something that's disrespectful to them and make sure that they're still honored and that that's not confusing or unkind in any way to them or hurtful. And then, secondly, I've seen in writing, and I know that you've now said and clarified, I think, that there is no definitive name, but I've seen in writing, it referred to as elementary school. And I want to be real clear that we're no longer just an elementary school here and I want us to honor our middle school students. That's been a tough transition here and I think it's really important that we make that real clear when we're writing things, that we're no longer just an elementary school. Let's please recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you say your name?
Angela Kraus, yeah.
Did you, I don't know where the sign-up sheet is.
I stuck it over here.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you very much.
It seemed better than-
Commissioner White, can I?
Well, here's what I want to point out. This is exactly why we don't let board members talk, because then the focus becomes, and again, I could respond to everything people said out there. I could. I believe I would have an effective response. But the temptation is far too great for us to take over the conversation. This is supposed to be a hearing where we're listening to you all, warts and all, good things and all, we're just supposed to be listening. And when we, and I'm telling you, it's one of the toughest parts about this job, to sit here and take comments that you should not respond to, because otherwise, focus is on us. So I would ask my colleagues, if at all possible, and I hate to do this to you, Commissioner, but I did, but let me tell you something. Before I did it, before I did it to you, I did it to myself, because there were things that I wanted to respond to and I didn't. Right? Right? Well, okay, that's fine. I'm just pointing out to you all why it's a long tradition, began before even I took this gavel, that board members do not speak. We just listen at this. We'll have plenty of time to talk at the hearing where we talk about whether we want to do this or not. But anyways, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Ali Abdoumatin. I'm the principal of the Northeast High School at the Douglas Campus. And I actually had come not to speak tonight. My intention was to hear what was, what the conversation was going to be. And I've been heartened by this. I've had, just a little background to the Douglas Campus. The Douglas Campus, I believe the school was built in the early 60s. In theory, there is no Frederick Douglass school that's named and has a name with the state education department. We are Northeast College Preparatory High School, Northwest Junior, actually Northwest Junior High School. So in theory, there is no North, there's no Douglas school. But there is a Douglas campus and there's a Douglas brand. And that's what we believe should also matter. The launch of the celebration of the Frederick Douglass, his 200th birthday, was launched at the Frederick Douglass campus. We have always known us, pride in ourselves in being Frederick Douglass, home of the Panthers. So yes, the concern about naming another school with the name Frederick Douglass ran a real charge within the school community at the Douglas campus for a number of reasons. But hearing the conversation about why it's important, I think it's realistic. I think it makes perfect sense as a principal. I think it makes perfect sense that a school that's built on the ground where Frederick Douglass's home burned and having both the rec center and the library named Frederick Douglass, it feels like if we don't have, you know, we got the garage and we got the deck, but we don't have the house. So I understand that and I don't object to it. I believe it makes perfect sense. The question you ask about how does the, how do the staff, and it's really the staff, the students aren't quite as involved at this point, but I believe the staff, because there has been significant change in that school and because of a lot of other issues that relate to that school, to that campus, there is this concern that we're sort of being pushed to the side. That's the feeling that staff have. Friday morning, there was a conversation, as soon as I get to school, somebody walks in the door and says, "They're going to close us, aren't they?" The feeling was because this name, they're going to take our name and give it to another school. I said, "Just calm down, stop speculating." Because that, and I sent an email out and it was very focused. Let's focus on what we're able to do and that what we can control. We do have a brand and the brand, we believe, is the Douglas campus. There is this idea that there may be some conflict in terms of if this school is Frederick Douglass or Anna Douglas, Douglas name is attached, that there will be some misunderstanding of which school is which. But I think we can get past that. Again, I did not intend to speak tonight, but when the question came up, I felt as the principal, I had to make a statement. And that's been my position right along. I had initially intended to speak tonight, but after the, I heard the conversation about the name could be Anna Douglas, the name could be some, another Douglas family member, then it became digestible. It became something that it feels reasonable. It's not an unreasonable request. So there is angst among the staff. Let me just say this. I was hired, last Thursday I was brought back as a permanent principal, I was retired, and I was asked to come back because I did have history as a principal. And the school, I'm going to be honest, the school hasn't, the emotional life of the staff in that building is significant stress. So I'm assigned as principal Thursday night, Friday morning, here comes someone saying, "We're going to use the name Douglas," and it freaked people out. It did. It freaked people out. So my job was to settle everybody down. I was going to, I think I was able to do that. And I was not going to speak because I felt that the news release acknowledged who we are as a campus, and I appreciate you bringing this up, acknowledged who we are, and it made, so it was okay. But because tonight, the question was asked, I felt as principal, I couldn't sit here and ignore what would be, what is an obvious question. So I just want to say that we just have to take careful steps to not disrespect the current location, the current building that's known as the Douglas campus when this decision is being made. We have to factor in and acknowledge that there is a place that has the Douglas name that is attached to it and is related to Frederick Douglass. So thank you very much. I did put my name.
Thank you. Commissioner Funchess? Please.
What I was going to say, you know I got to do this, y'all know me. My thing is, why can't we have both? This is the home of Frederick and Anna Douglas. And if this, and in this city, if no other city, you know, why can't we have both? And what my, what my direct comment to Commissioner Powell was, being the school, the board liaison to the Frederick Douglass campus, you know, I believe that there is, like I said, like Ali said it, what I wanted to say, that there is no school named. And we, and we can, we're creative people. We can come up with a name that is distinctly different and to say that in two different sections of our city that we are honoring. We're honoring the homestead, with, let's say, the Anna and Frederick Douglass Community School. And that kid, that a kid, it's conceivable that a child in our community can go under the banner of Frederick Douglass, K-12, and walk their educational history, walk their educational journey in the shadow of Frederick Douglass. Why can't we have that? Why do we have to be dichotomous in our thinking and think that we can't do it both ways? Now, that's not, because y'all gave me more time to think, this is what I'm saying now, right? Because I just wanted to directly respond to your question to say that the schools that sit on the Frederick Douglass campus are Northeast and Northwest. That's the names of the school. So we can have an Anna and Frederick Douglass Community School, Neighborhood School, School that would honor K-8, that, and we could still have the Douglas campus. So it is, all things are possible when we use our vocabulary.
There being no further comments, I just want to say, board members will be available to talk to you all, as we frequently do when we get ourselves in a situation afterwards. And I definitely want to speak to that young lady back there and the gentleman who spoke and this gentleman as well. But next step would be, you'll hear the board talk about our response to some of these comments, possible ideas. I'm hoping it will be at our next board business meeting. But if for some reason, I can't get consensus around putting that on the agenda, we'll get it on in July. But my goal would be to have it on in June, June. So my hope is to get it on for May. If not, then June. This conversation will continue. The response to some of the concerns that you made, the ideas that you offered, will be discussed in a public forum at our next board meeting. That's when we have our conversation. And if we need to understand how the administration will respond to questions or concerns, we'll have appropriate staff from the administration address those questions or concerns. Are there any other comments or questions?
And when would a decision be made? When would a decision be made?
Well, that's what I was saying, Ms. Jackson-Radney. We will meet in, my hope as president is to get it on the agenda for our May business meeting, which is next week, which is, this Thursday, I'm sorry, this Thursday. And if for some reason, I can't build consensus around, you know, by and large, getting four votes on a name, then we'll put it off to the next board business meeting, which would be June, as early as possible. That's the goal. Yes, Mr. Underwood?
Two questions.
Yep.
Or one question, is there two decisions, i.e., to change, which is one question, and the second would be to what?
I think those are one and the same. I think when the board, when the board conversates about this, they'll be saying, "Are we going to change it?" And then the next conversation will be, "What would we change it to?" And we've heard some idea suggestions today. Yes, back there?
Again, I'm Jack McRae. There are two distinct, different conversations that are going on in this room and you have people in the room that want to see some changes within the administration and the way certain things are done through the administration, through the board, and through the administration. I think that it's extremely important that you move forward, that you're trying to separate the two, so they feel their communication is not good, or they feel that there are some issues with participation on the board and being more active in the schools. Those are different issues than the naming of a school, but people need to hear that you are going to be addressing those. Is that fair with some people in the room? I mean, that's important. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
There is, to this question about the two issues, I agree with you. But again, it's very tempting for me to take this mic and continue to address some of those issues, because I think the addition of letting the people speak, expressing their concerns, following up with direct conversations, and even having additional meetings on those subjects, we'll do that later. I just, I think the temptation to make this about the board is too great and I personally want to avoid doing that. I think there was another question over there?
When you arrive at a petition about the name of a school, how would that decision be communicated to the community? Will it be a name that you decided on and then we accepted, or are, will there be choices that we are asked to respond to, or just what mechanism makes that happen?
Sure. That's the question. Board bylaws, which are our laws, that none of these board members up here crafted, say that you conduct, you have, somebody initiates a petition and that was done here, you have to get 100 signatures, they got 300 signatures. The next thing the law says is that we have to conduct a public hearing. And then the third and final thing that happens is the board makes the decision about if there's going to be a name change. That's it. How, whether that happens in a, like at our next board meeting, or we deliberate it in another policies committee setting, is up to the board. But the board makes the decision.
Okay, so the board decides that there's going to be a name change and the board decides on the name?
Yes, that's right. Yep. And how it is-
Have we passed the point of offering suggestions?
Oh, no, no, no. You could do it now or send in something by mail or by email, absolutely. And then in terms of the issue of communication, because I want to respond to this in terms of Mr. Eisen's question, we do, when we communicate to parents and to the community at large, we do it a number of ways. One of the ways that we do it is through robocalls, that was done here. We do it through emails, I think that was done in this format, or parents got direct letters, right? The other thing that we do, quite honestly, and this happens a lot, not only in this district, but throughout this community, the media will find out about something, right? And they will say, "Hey, listen." I'll tell you, a reporter will call you up and say, "Hey, listen, you're thinking about changing the name? One of the things we want to do is want to get people here, people who maybe don't read their emails or hang up when they get a robocall." So we will say, when a reporter calls us, "Hey, are you, is it true you're going to have a hearing to talk about a name change?" Or Channel 9 will say, "Hey, is it true you're going to have a hearing?" And so we'll speak to them, "Why? Because we want to make sure people turn out, because not everybody listens to their emails." So how it will be communicated, we'll probably in the same format. We would first notify parents, but as we do that, understand, one of the ways that we get to parents, it's a reality of this day and age, is to use the media. When those two, when the, when Time or Spectrum had it on the news and when Gannett put it in the paper, they gave the date, time, and location of the meeting. That's why you use the media sometimes, because they communicate with people. So having said that, any other questions or comments?
There's some other over there.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you involve the children in any way in the process of naming? I mean, if you, let's say you get two different thoughts, but it was related to the same person or that, would you have the children go down there and name them?
The board could. That's not a bad idea. The board could. This is to Mr. Eisen's question. The board could say, "Vicky, I want you to put out a survey." We could say that. I'm not so sure the board would. Put out a survey about what names, we could give them a list of names. The board could do that. Yep. And that could be part of the board's decision-making process. We could do that. We could- board's decision-making process. We could do that. We could, and so I would take that as a suggestion, which a number of the members of the board have heard, and they may choose to do that. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to be clear. Did Ms. Lebron say that the name change idea occurred quite a bit in the past, but recently it was re-attended?
It was...
Let me, let me answer this. Let me tell you something. There is one person who is more persistent, and he's our heavenly father, so than David Anderson. David Anderson has been pushing this, Dr. Anderson has been pushing this for years, for years. And let me tell you something. He stopped calling me, and Malik, I went to, and he and I have talked about this. I think he was really disappointed in our failure to follow up on this, long before they had the tragedy here.
So he reached out to me.
It was right, right. Right, right, right.
I'm the one that got it moving.
Yep.
Okay? And this just recently happened, because he could not get the votes before. So now it looks like we may have an opportunity to do this kind of name change. But he has been trying to do this for a long time with the board, and the board did not take it up, until he reached out to me, and we began to move in the process.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott.
Let me just make it clear.
The two things are not related. It's just so happened, that they're happening in the same period of time.
And I want to know if the board became receptive sometime during the period that Tray...
No.
No.
Let me, let me also say, sir, you know, the other thing, and this has been mentioned before by a couple people who are more involved in the history of this, is you know, this is the 200th, would have been his birthday, is that right? His birthday. So that was the other reason why this was brought up. And it's people who have a lot more knowledge about me on this hallowed ground than I do. This is very significant ground. Now, why people didn't do it in the past, I don't know. But the fact is, not looking in the rearview mirror, looking forward, someone's made the proposal now, and the board is considering. That's what we should focus on. And in my comments about people and the tragedies, we need to be forward-thinking, and that's the opportunity, to not look in the rearview mirror. But here's an idea that Dr. Anderson and others, by the way, have been promoting for many years, and we're moving on it. One way or another, we're moving on. All right? Any other comments?
I do, I just want to, I just, I do want to acknowledge what you said, oh my God, I forgot your name right now, don't kill me, Ms. Bragg Cooper. But also with the parents, I do agree, I do want to acknowledge that less than a week's notice is really not a good amount of notice. And so for that, we do have to acknowledge the feedback that you're giving as parents for all of us, but also to take back to our school chiefs, and those are the folks that also should be communicating with the principals. Because the way we communicate is down through to the superintendent, who is supposed to communicate to the chiefs, who then communicates to the principals, who then communicates to the parents. So there's many layers before us to you guys. But I do want to acknowledge that less than a week's notice is not acceptable. Thank you.
And let me just say, this is, again, let me just emphasize, why we don't do it this way. Because I have a response to that. When you express concern about what boards didn't, didn't do, if I were to say to you, what I did in the weeks preceding this, it would turn this conversation in a different direction. This should be about the children, Anna Marie Douglas, Frederick Douglas, but now we're talking about us adults here. And I don't think that's the right thing to do. But I can and should talk to you about what happened, but at a, at a one-on-one level. I just don't think that when we start saying, well, what did you do, or what did you didn't do, or what's your position, it redirects the focus away from you all. You made your grievance, it'd be heard, it should be heard, and nobody should be saying anything about it, until I come up and approach you and say, hey, listen, this is what the situation is. So that's why we don't respond, because it's now about us, and it should be about you. Any other questions or comments?
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and second, wait, wait, hold on, hold on. Yes, sir.
Just a quick comment.
Yes, sir.
If you're going to rename any school for Frederick Douglass in this district, you jolly well, it better be the best school in the best school district in the country. Otherwise, you're wasting your time.
All right. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Funches. All those who favor, say aye. Aye. Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming.